A minute after seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting in order. Ken, would you do the roll, please?
Absolutely, thank you. Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Steeler.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Commissioner Stender.
Here.
Commissioner Miller is absent. Chair Gerard.
Here. Thank you. We ask that variable, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Before we get started, I would just like to extend on behalf of the Planning Commission,
our congratulations to Commissioner Larson down there, who will be joining the City Council in January. Congratulations.
Thank you, Chairman, as well as my constituents as well.
And to the other Planning Commission members who ran, there will be an appointment in January, February. I encourage you to apply. So with that, the Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented or with changes as needed.
Mr. Chair, I would make the motion to approve the agenda as stated.
Second. I have a motion and a second. It's a non-debatable motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We have a new agenda item tonight. We have an open forum if anyone wishes to speak at this time. Special personal opinion for any type of business. We ask you, limit your comments to three minutes, and you have to sign the front table book, which is, I guess it's the back table. So if anyone wishes to speak to that, now is the open forum time. I don't see a mad rush coming forward, so we'll move on to item six, a consent agenda. Consent and general consideration is one item. A, approve meeting minutes from the regular meeting of October 23, 2024. Chair is looking for a motion.
All motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, a motion to approve?
Right.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Here.
One abstention. Our regular agenda action item, it's a public hearing for conditional use permit and site plan review for the Met Council sanitary sewer lift station at 20981 Forest Road North, resolution number 11-13-24-01, and resolution number 11-13-24-02. This is a public hearing. The way this will work this evening, the staff will present the application as they understand it. Planning Commission members will ask any questions that they may have. We will then ask the applicant if they would like to add anything. We may possibly have questions for the applicant. After that, we will host a public hearing. I'll get further directions at that point. Once we close the public hearing, we'll come back to the Planning Commission for final decisions. So with that, I believe, Ken, you're presenting.
Hi, Mr. Chair, thank you. As you introduced for this application, or applications for this item tonight, of consideration of a conditional use permit, site plan approval for the property at 20981 Forest Road. Put that up on the screen. It's this square here. It's a, currently a sanitary sewer lift station operated by MCES, Metropolitan Council Environmental Services, that are the ones that run the sewage system for the Seven County metro area. They requested a city approval of a conditional use permit and site plan approval because they're going to be making some changes to the property. And this is a survey of the current conditions. There is a, you know, that doesn't do very well, so let's get a better image. Scroll through here. There is, it is sanitary sewer lift station. This is what it looks like now. Lift stations take sewage, and as you can imagine, they lift them or pump them, pump the sewage downstream. And in this case, this sewer line goes all the way through Hugo, Wiper Lake, and eventually to the Pig's Eye Plant in St. Paul. The city is, and the applicants now are requesting to make some changes to the site. So they have a portable generator. This is where they can get into the lower operating facilities. And part of the reason for the request is their, some of their underground equipment's getting worn out and rusted, as shown on the screen. I'm going to get to the site plan that gives us a little more. So again, this is, this is the survey of the existing facility, a little enlarged with concrete and concrete there. The proposal is to add a enclosed equipment structure. This is an enlargement of that, to bring some or all of their underground equipment up above grade in an enclosed, secure facility while upgrading their electrical systems to run the pumps and the, what the lift station does. This again, this is what the plan will look like, or what the site will look like here when it's done. There will be enclosure building here, a standby generator here, and then more paving in between the two. Why we're at the commission this evening is, as far as I could tell in the city records, the city had never issued a conditional use permit for this property, for this facility, or for any facility. City code requires a conditional use permit for essential services and government buildings, and the staff's opinion that this fell into that category. And because they are making changes to the site itself above ground, and it is an industrial zoning district, we're also considering the site plan review this evening. So I outlined in the report, criteria we have in the city code for conditional use permits, and very succinctly, this facility, by making the improvements they're proposing, meets all those criteria. In fact, I could say, or I think everybody would agree, that with the proposed improvements, we'll ensure the safe and consistent operation of the sewer lift station, which is vital to the city sanitary sewer system. That's really the conditional use permit I view as a, so, the whole thing is somewhat of formality, but here we are. The proposed building will look very similar to this. Again, for the equipment to be inside, it's 12 foot by 20 foot and about 10 feet tall with a flat roof. It's, because of the location, again, we're here, there's nothing around it as far as buildings. There's the new PGA building across the street. And in my mind, it looks just like, well, it is, an oversized equipment building, like you might see on a boulevard or even a commercial industrial site. So really, I have no issues with the design or the building itself. The one thing it has come up with the review, as part of the site plan review, are the setbacks that are proposed. The code requires, and this is on page three of the report, which has been page 10 of your packet, the rear setback here to be 20 feet for a building, and it's proposed at about 12. The south side setback is shown at about 7 feet, and it's required to be at 10. And the parking or drive aisle, again, is shown at about 7 feet along here, and it's required to be at 10. I spoke to the project engineer from Brown and Caldwell about this when I was writing the report, and they were confident they could make those changes to shift the building and the parking to meet those setback requirements. There is no exterior lighting proposed, other than a pack light here on the side of the building, so there shouldn't be any effects, negative effects on any of the property. The site itself will have some grading, but they are proposing to keep the trees that are there and try not to disturb them. There's one in this location. No signage proposed. The driveway itself here does not change going out to Forest Road. All that said, the staff can, or the code requirements for site plan approval, I've outlined on, again, on page four of the report, page 11 of your packet, and this proposal meets all those requirements. Watershed District reviewed this, and because of the limited amount of site disturbance, they are not requiring a permit. Our city staff reviewed it, and the only comment we've received was from our building department about the need for building permits, which would be the case for any project. We had the neighborhood meeting back on October 16th, and we had no one attend, so we got to talk for an hour. That was great. To summarize, staff finds that this proposal meets our findings, required findings for conditional use permit. With the changes outlined in the report for the site plan, the site plan will meet our requirements for site plan approval. So you have two recommendations for your consideration this evening. Bottom of page 12, first one is the, adopt the resolution for the conditional use permit. We're recommending subject to seven conditions. And then your second request or action to consider is the second resolution for site plan approval, and that's subject to 12 conditions that are included. Probably the biggest or most important condition in both of those is the applicant revising the site plan to meet all the setback requirements. With that, there are three representatives here that can speak to the application. If more questions, Ben, and John, and Bert, in no particular order. With that, I'll stop and take questions.
Any questions for staff?
Two. Ken, would you have an objection to stating in section, in point one of each of the two resolutions, that the, all normally required setbacks shall be met for the building and parking lot?
I, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I've added that as a condition in both.
I'm looking for it, and I missed it.
Three C at the top of page 13.
Three, I've got the requirements of city engineer, public works director.
No, prior to any.
Three C on the.
Three C, the top one. That one, right there.
On the first. Second page of the.
Okay, thank you. All right.
And that's also in the, the top of page 14, which is 9A.
Thank you. Thank you, I apologize, I missed that. And my second question is for the city attorney. In the olden days, if we were to take an action, that action had to be listed on the agenda as an action item. And on our agenda tonight, I see the public hearing, but I don't see a B that says action regarding. Are we cool to take action tonight? And as I said, in the olden days, if we were to take an action, it had to be specifically listed on our agenda, and, and I understand that that may have changed as part of the open meeting law.
Yes, so, thank you, Your Honor, Commissioner. Yes, you are, based on the language that is in your agenda, you are free to take the actions that Mr. Roberts is asking you to take this evening. For a regularly scheduled meeting, the agenda rules are different than if you are under a special meeting or an emergency meeting. So as long as the agenda identifies the topic that's being, you know, the topic that's being addressed, and with some ability for the public to understand what's going to be happening, that's fine. In a special meeting or an emergency meeting, you need to be more specific about what you're going to do. Does that provide clarity?
Yep, thank you.
Other questions for staff? Hearing none, would the applicant like to add anything to the conversation? We ask if you do, please step up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, John Hemming. I'm an engineer with the Met Council, 3565 Kennebec Drive, Eagan. Mr. Chair, we've read staff report, and we agree with it. Staff has been great to work with, and, and that's the only comment we have, but we're here if you have questions.
We have any questions of staff? I'm sorry, the applicant. We already asked, we had staff. We appreciate you coming tonight, though. Stay tuned, we may have some later for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's good to hear that staff was easy to work with.
Yeah, we try.
All right. This is a public hearing. The way this will work tonight, is we'll open the public hearing, we'll ask anyone if they'd like to speak to this issue. We ask that you come to the lectern, state your name and address for the record, spend a couple minutes telling us about the application and your thoughts. Once we have heard from everyone, we will close the public hearing, and then we'll bring it back for action on, from the commissioners. So with that, we'll open the public hearing at 7:18 PM. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? I'll ask the second time, since my first time wasn't very clear. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? Ken, do we have any thing to be read in, or is there anyone online who would like to speak to this application?
Mr. Chair, no, and no.
Very good. I'll ask one more time, if anyone wishes to speak to this application. Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing at 7:19 PM. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Before we, we do need two motions tonight, one for each of the resolutions. The Planning Commission is the final on this, so that's what our recommendation will be for the final, and it won't be a recommendation to City Council, it'll be just the final. So with that, further discussion, questions, comments, motions. Susan.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of, let me find the exact language, so that I'm, I'm solid here.
Page 12.
Well, I'm not, I'm not seeing page numbers here.
On the agenda.
Yes.
Page 12.
All right. Mr. I move that the Planning Commission adopt resolution 11-13-24-01 to approve the conditional use permit for the Met Council Environmental Services sanitary sewer lift station located at 20981 Forest Road North, subject to conditions 1 through 7.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimous. Chair is looking for a motion for part B of this.
Mr. Chair, I move that we recommend the Planning Commission adopt resolution 11-13-24-02 for the approval of the site and project plans for the Metropolitan Council Environmental Service sanitary sewer lift station at 20981 Forest Road North, subject to conditions 1 through 12.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimous. Good luck with your project. It looks like a snazzy building, so everything's always an improvement. Whenever we get an improvement, we're happy. So thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to see if this technology works, no?
So tonight, our, number, item number eight is a discussion on cannabis zoning regulations. Making the presentation tonight will be Amanda Johnson. She's our city attorney. Ms. Johnson, I have to tell you, we run a little less formal, I use first names up here. How would you like to be addressed? Attorney Johnson.
Call me, you can call me Amanda.
Are you going to go through sections and want comments throughout, or do you want to give the whole nine yards and then come back to it?
So I have it set up.
I don't do anything, because if you're plugged in.
Well, I might have to pivot. Please hold. Let me try this guy. I am, I'm, I'm very short, so if I sit back there, then I'm behind that big screen. You can't see me very good.
I feel your pain. Quiet at the end.
Is it showing up on your, on there now?
It's not.
It's not?
Do you want me to ask Jill?
I can come over there. We don't need to waste the time. Okay. I want you. Yeah, well, I have a adapter.
Oh, it's good. It's kind of come to an end for a while.
All right.
I'm planning to try. Yeah, it's a little chilly and windy. I think there's a place that opens. I'm willing to go out there. I'm not, I'm not willing to put on the gloves and the knit hat. It's cost my season.
Okay, are you all seeing something on a screen?
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect. So I can be on the record. So, good evening, Planning Commission. As we already established, I'm Amanda Johnson, the city attorney. And tonight, for this topic, the agenda is, I'm going to quickly go through the cannabis legislation summary. I think that will be helpful for you to understand the city's role. We'll talk about what the current city ordinances are relating to cannabis right now, what we've received so far from direction from the council that will help you understand why the words of the ordinance are what they are. And then we'll walk through the proposed ordinance itself. That's where I will be looking for feedback, and I really want that to be, whatever your opinion is, on each slide, I'll have opportunities for you to give me feedback. The, the plan is to bring this proposed ordinance, along with your feedback, to the council on the 25th for consideration. This does need to be passed by the end of this year. Okay, so real quick, a history of the cannabis legislation in Minnesota. In 2022, the state authorized or legalized the sale of hemp-derived cannabinoids. So those are what we now are calling the edibles law. Most, the most common item that came out of that is the THC beverages, but it also allows edibles and some topical ointments. Importantly, the 2022 legislation limited the amount of THC in your serving, and so some people have kind of referred to this as a lower potency THC product. These are just examples of what the products that were legalized in 2022 look like. In 2023, and then modified slightly in 2024, the state legalized marijuana products. So that is the cannabis. They legalized recreational use. They created the Office of Cannabis Management. That's a new state office that oversees cannabis. As part of the statute, the act, the laws that they put forth, it limited the role of local government in terms of what restrictions or just regulations municipalities can have over cannabis businesses. It reduced criminal penalties. It did make marijuana no longer a Schedule I controlled substance for the state. It is important to note, however, that federally, it is still a Schedule I controlled substance. The office, the statute also created two different types of licenses, so, or licensees, really, just your standard applicants, and then something called a social equity applicant. And to be a social equity applicant, you had to check a variety of boxes. So it was targeting individuals who had been disproportionately affected by the criminalization of, the previous criminalization of marijuana. So if you had a, like a marijuana-related conviction in your past, that was kind of like a check, and you want checks in this situation. If you live in an area that had a large percentage of people who were convicted of marijuana-related crimes, that you got to check for if a member of your family was convicted of one of those crimes. And what that does is it puts you into a different bucket that allows you to get front-of-the-line access to licenses, to business licenses, and it also puts you into grant programs and business development programs that are strictly available to social equity applicants. So these are just some examples of the products that were allowed, legalized in 2023. There were some modifications in 2024, but frankly, nothing real substantial, from the perspective of, you know, didn't change what was made legal. So let's talk quickly about the cannabis businesses that, in your packet, I provided a summary of the different types of cannabis businesses, and obviously, we'll get into the meat of that when we're talking about the ordinance itself. But we have a cannabis, microbusiness, and meso-business. Those are businesses that are able to do essentially every aspect of cannabis business. So they can cultivate the cannabis, they can manufacture the cannabis, they can sell the cannabis, they can allow for onsite consumption of the cannabis. They are the microbrewery for cannabis, essentially. A cannabis cultivator, they're the growers. In Minnesota, so far, it appears as though they're likely going to be overwhelmingly indoor cultivation, for the obvious reason that we do not have a long growing season. Marijuana requires about a four-month grow cycle, so it, from a financial perspective, it doesn't make a lot of sense to grow a plant, you know, to grow a plant for a year-round business, if you only have four months to grow it. Cannabis manufacturing is what it sounds like. You're taking the plant and you're turning it into some sort of a consumable product. So if you're talking about, and I feel like I should mention, I know all of this because of my job. I have an alarming amount of cannabis knowledge, so don't, don't let that be off-putting. But it's, I have to, for what I'm doing.
So you're going to blaze them right here, is that what you're telling us?
I do have samples that I brought. I thought that would be helpful. We'll get to that, that's later. So, so the manufacturer is going to turn it into a product. That's going to be anything from just drying the, you know, the bud and the flowers, to be able to smoke it, to compressing it, turning it into some sort of an oil, turning it into a baked good, or even more scientific manufacturing that's going to turn it into some sort of, like a gummy or something, some other edible product. And there's, the vapes were back there with the oil. And the, yeah, so we have got that. The retailer is exactly what it sounds like, you're selling the product. The wholesaler is also what it sounds like, you are kind of the middleman between, between businesses, transporter, you're moving it, testing facility, you're testing the product to make sure it complies with regulations. A cannabis event organizer, you'll see that that is not a use in our use table, because it's not a use, right? It's, it's just, but it's a license that somebody would have to obtain to be able to put on a cannabis event. Cannabis events are, you're under the OCM, you would get a license to be able to operate a four, up to a four-day event. It's not a guarantee that you get to have onsite consumption at your event. That is something that the local authority would need to approve, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. Cannabis delivery service, this is going to be like DoorDash for weed, so they'll bring it to you. And then the medical cannabis combination license is where you're selling medical and recreational. Initially, they had really kind of separated out medical-use cannabis from recreational cannabis. That has gone away in 2024. They did some changes this last season, this last legislative cycle, and so they're really kind of just putting that all under the same umbrella. Eventually, those hemp-derived THC products that we talked about, that's really the beverages in Minnesota, that's, that's the largest portion of the market. Those will be required to get a license with OCM. Right now, they just need to register. Any questions so far? I know this was in your packet, so I'm trying to not, and I recognize, I'm sure you all read it, but I just want to make sure that we all have the same foundation for where we're headed. Okay, I think it's important to quick talk about these hemp-derived edibles. There is a really critical distinction between the hemp-derived products and cannabis, and that is, these are legal federally. They can cross state lines, they, that you can use your credit card to buy them, you know, there, all kinds of things are different. For cannabis, because it is still federally illegal, it is a cash-only business. You may not buy your product from across state lines, so whatever is sold here must be grown, manufactured, everything here. So what, that, why that matters is my, the cannabis retailer can't get a license until there's something to sell, right? So that means if you back that So that means if you back that, that train up, that means there needs to be a cultivator out there who's growing it, somebody who's manufacturing it so that that retailer can sell it. All of that must happen within the state. That is not true for the edibles. Um, in addition, there are some special rules for the, for the edibles, uh, really focusing on the THC beverages. For whatever reason, our state has a huge market for these. Um, there's a lot of states that are trying to figure out why it's been so successful here and replicate it. And to date, it hasn't taken off in the other states like it has here. Um, but I've heard from, uh, bars and, um, uh, you know, liquor stores and things more in the metro that they're seeing roughly 30% of their sales are shifting over to these THC beverages. For example, I was, um, just at a meeting a couple of weeks ago in Stillwater. And, uh, there was a, a gentleman there who was saying that they're looking at about 40% of their sales. This next year, they anticipate to be THC beverages as people are looking for alcohol alternatives.
Amanda.
So, yeah.
Do the beverages have the same restriction on, um, concentration proportion?
Yes, as the, as those THC edibles, it does. But it's sort of a misnomer. It, the way that they had broken out the concentration, it was create, it, the math was done by somebody who'd never consumed a product. So they didn't, it was sort of like, um, applying weight to something that needs to be.
Volume.
A vol, yeah, exactly. It was weight versus volume, and so it didn't correlate correctly. The long and the short of it is, a THC beverage will absolutely be an, impair you. If you consume one, you will be impaired. Um, you know, to what degree, I suppose it would be about the same as having, you know, a beer. But it, you will be impaired. It's not nothing. Um, but importantly, liquor stores under the Minnesota statutes are allowed to sell THC beverages under their liquor license. It's an actual product that they're allowed to sell under the liquor license. And if a bar or a restaurant has an on-sell liquor license, they are allowed to, um, have onsite consumption. The one thing that they are required to do under the law is if you are allowing onsite consumption, um, you have to make sure that you're not selling a person both alcohol and THC products. So wristbands have, you know, there's been something, there's been some ways to try to monitor that from that perspective. So if I, if I'm the bartender and I sold you a beer, I can't then sell you THC for your next round. You, you kind of pot commit to one or the other. It's a little hokey, um, and it's still being worked out. And I would dare say that there's not super great enforcement around it right now.
So Amanda, can, uh, when, cannabis is a cash business, so.
Yes, it is.
Liquor stores and the bars, is it cash for that too?
Is not, because that's the hemp-derived. Um, so that's legal federally, so they're going to be able to use, um, a credit card just like normal. So when, when we get into some of the performance standards that we've put into this ordinance, that's why. Because there are some real security concerns around a cash-only business where everybody knows it's a cash-only business. By the way, about half of the armored trucks won't pick up their cash. So there's only specific companies that are willing to deal in cannabis cash. And they can't put it in a regular bank because the bank's same issue, uh, you know, as the credit card. So it has to go to a credit union. So they have some limitations like that. It has to be like a state uni, credit union, not, um, something larger. Um, that cr, create the need to have frankly, just more, um, conditions to ensure that everybody's operating in a safe manner. And we'll also talk about odor here shortly, which is another big thing. Okay, so this last year, the, um, Office of Cannabis Management put in a maximum number of licenses that can be issued before July 1st of 2026. I think this is important to note because there's a lot of talk around every community must require a minimum of one retail shop per 12,500 residents. And that's a, um, fraction count. So up to 12,500, you must allow one. If you have 12,501, you have to allow two, and, you know, and so on. Until you, so, so then once you get to 20, would that be 26,000, then you'd have to allow three. That wasn't how it was supposed to be, um, but the new guidance from OCM that came down just like a month ago made that clear. Yeah.
But isn't that only if the city decides to control the licensing? If we say, county, you're the ones, we don't want this. We don't, we don't want to have to have the responsibility for the enforcement, et cetera. Are we still required to have the same number of establishments?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so, but what's important to understand is that by 2026, they put these caps on the maximum number of licenses to ensure that there isn't a satur, oversaturation in the market. They were, this is my favorite story to tell about this whole thing. Um, they were supposed to do market analysis, like really significant market research. Um, they didn't. Instead, they put out a survey where they asked people, how do you get your weed? And the number one answer was my drug dealer. And so that was their math to figure out how many, because they're trying to figure out how many people are going to buy this. You know, what's our demand out here? It's, it's interesting, some of the stuff that's coming out of OCM.
We've got more than 125 drug dealers in the state.
Well, they're trying to narrow that scope, I guess. And so that's my point. If, if there's only 125 retail licenses permitted in the state.
Yeah, this is, these are statewide numbers.
Statewide numbers by 2026, no city's getting seven. That, that's, that math just doesn't work. And then the other important thing to keep in mind is this is the maximum number of licenses. But for every type of license, at least half of those license must go to a social equity applicant. Which means that if you only have seven social equity applicants who manage to get through the process for say, the cannabis cultivator license, that's a complicated one because of what you're doing. Um, and actually, manufacturing is really complicated too. Then only seven standard applicants get a license. Does that make sense? So at no point do your standard licenses get to be more than your social equity licenses. For now. I don't know what that looks like because the statute also says that a social equity, equity applicant after three years can transfer their license to a non-social equity applicant. So I don't know what that looks like in the future.
So is a retailer is at a single store? So like McDonald's wouldn't get one for all of the state and have one at every McDonald's?
Correct. No, it's, it's one per store. They're allowed to get up to five. Um, but it wouldn't be for, each one has to get a, you know, a separate license. But one license holder can hold up to five essentially licenses. And there's some rules around not being allowed to hold different types of licenses. But keep in mind, those mezzo businesses and micro businesses, you're able to do all the things. So, um, those are probably going to be the licenses that are in the most demand. And we'll talk a little bit about that in a hot second. Okay, we talked about, oh, we didn't talk about this, pre-approval licenses. So this was a new thing in 2024. In 2024, the statute created, because what they realized was the social equity applicants, um, and I, I apologize, I'm gonna do some stereotyping here. Because of what they have as the criteria, are going to struggle to get through, um, like get financing and to be able to have the type of credit that might be necessary to be able to get a lease and all of those things. And so this year, they created this, something called a pre-approval program where social equity applicants could apply for a pre-approval license. So they spent the summer working with OCM to get their paperwork in, to see if they qualify. So that way, they could take this pre-approval license to a bank, to a city, to wherever and say, see, look, when they're going to start issuing licenses in 2025, I'm going to get one. So, and really, it's for, for financing, but, um, they haven't issued any pre-approval licenses. They are behind on that, and we do not have any estimated time for when they are going to be issuing those.
They don't even have a permanent commissioner.
They do not have a permanent commissioner. Um, okay, so the current ordinances that we have on the books in this city right now, we have two. One, we have, uh, moratorium. We have a, so we have an interim ordinance that is temporary prohibiting the establishment of a cannabis business within this city. It has never been, nor is it currently legal to have a cannabis business in this city right now. That will expire January of 2025. That was what was allowed under the statute. We also have a second ordinance, and this is because the statute was written in a way that's difficult for the police to enforce. Um, so we have an ordinance that makes it clear that you may not consume cannabis in a public, in public places. So.
That'll stay in place for a while?
Yes, that stays. Um, so we have had several, um, presentations, you know, discussions with council, updating them on the various laws, and then also seeking feedback from them in terms of what are you looking for in your, um, in your regulations around cannabis? And the conversation that I have had with all of my cities is, okay, there's, there's Vegas and there's Utah in the spectrum of regulation. You're welcome, Susan. I thought you'd like that. And you're, you know, and so what I need to know is where are you on that spectrum? Because that's going to determine what sort of ordinances we're going to recommend that you build out. And so the direction that we have from council to date is they want to keep that registration process within the city. So the registration process, the licenses from OCM. What the registration does is that's what the city can do, or that's what the city can punt to the county. Um, they want to keep that here, uh, because one, you, we are able to collect some fees with that. Um, if we want to in the future, that allows us to limit the number of retails, uh, retail locations. And you cannot limit the number of retail shops if you don't keep the registration process. So they want to keep that with the city, but they do not want to currently limit the number of retail licenses for right now. And part of that goes back to what I had shared in the previous slide. There's just not that many licenses that are going to be coming down. Um, and there's other ways to make sure that you don't have too many businesses in the city. And we'll talk about that when we get to the ordinance. Um, and they weren't interested in a lot of additional regulation and roadblock, roadblocks. The reality is the statutes are robust. They have a lot of requirements that they have to follow in there. Um, from double entry to get in to how they're taking IDs. This is not like going to a, you know, a liquor store and trying to buy a bottle of, of, um, Bacardi. This is much more involved. And so there, there already is a lot of safeguards in place. Um, and so the, the council was not really interested in creating a lot of additional, um, restriction. So let's move to the ordinance. And buckle up because I want your feedback on all of it. So I'm going through it like almost line by line.
I, I'm just confused about one thing.
Yeah.
You said that they could sell in, in a bar. And just like they're selling alcohol, they could sell the THC. But what do you mean that there, you can't, that there are additional restrictions you just can't go in and?
So that, that's for the THC member. That's the legal stuff. That's the hemp-derived.
Okay.
For cannabis products, that is a completely different safety, security requirement from this, from the state. That's going, there's, um, massive security plans that they have to provide for them. We want them to pro, provide them to us as well, by the way. But, um, they have to do that. They have to show their, uh, two-point entry system. They have to have a very specific, how they take the IDs and take down the information and run it through a scanner. I mean, so that's for cannabis. Cannabis is incredibly regulated. THC beverages is not regulated at all.
And so.
Or, that's not fair. It, it is. It's just minimal.
Right. So what, are you looking at two sets of ordinances? One for THC and one for cannabis? Or are you just looking at cannabis ordinances tonight?
Really, we're, it's really just cannabis. Um, the THC kind of is what it is. Under the statute, under the, the liquor statutes, the changes that they made to the liquor statutes this last year, there's not much for us to say. If a bar wants to serve it, they get to serve it. If a, if a liquor store wants to sell it, they get to sell it. The only thing that the city could do is say, we don't want to allow liquor stores anymore. Or we don't want to allow bars anymore. But if you're allowing bars or you're allowing liquor stores, you're allowing them to serve those products. We don't have control over that.
And do we still have a limit on the number of licenses in Forest Lake?
For liquor stores? Or, yes, we do.
Okay.
I don't remember what, is it 17? I don't recall, I, I don't recall what the number is off the top of my head, though.
Thank you. And I apologize for interrupting so much.
Oh, you're fine.
Amanda, is this then, let's just say like more like Illinois and Colorado to go shopping at the cannabis stores?
Yes, if, if you've ever been to Illinois or Michigan or, or, or Colorado where they have the double-door system, this is going to be identical to that.
My, my second question is it has to do with, as you're getting immunity ordinance, you're only allowing cultivation in the industrial, the ag, the conservancy, depending how you're gonna do it. But you got these micro and mezzos which are going from one, so they have to have, what, multiple locations within the same community? Or?
Yeah, so that's, so that's something that was more recently. I didn't understand how those businesses were going to be set up. And I saw them more as, oh, this is maybe like a farm-to-table where it would be kind of like the, a winery where you, I don't know why you'd walk around these plants, but, but it would all sort of be on your same property. And I have since spoken to a couple of individuals who have created these, uh, businesses in other states. And they said, oh, no, you are not going to set it up that way. You are going to have separate locations. And so that is a super perfect segue into our definition section. Because what we have in our definition section is we defined the uses, not the business. Does that make sense? So when we make our use chart, our use chart, um, talks about, and it's, it's page, I don't know what page it is of the packet, but it's page five of the ordinance.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine? So it's page forty-nine is the, um, is the use table, and I have that slide. I'll pull that up in a second. But I just, before I go there, what I want you to understand is we are not establishing, uh, a business per district rather a use. So where are the uses allowed? Where can you grow this? Your license is almost irrelevant. I, you know, what, what are you doing? And same thing, manufacturing, same thing, you know, selling it, uh, allowing onsite consumption. Where are we going to allow those things to be done? And that's how we set up the use table. And so because of that, we had to create definitions for those activities. There are not definitions in the statute talking about activities. The, the statute actually does not even define every type of business. It defines cultivator, and then it stopped. I don't know why, but it didn't define any of the rest of it. So importantly, these are definitions that I've created. Um, so if, if you have a problem with them, I want you to tell me now. Um, but try to captivate, you know, what does indoor cultivation mean? Because there's places where we would allow indoor cultivation. There's outdoor cultivation. Ag or conservancy might be appropriate for out, outdoor cultivation, but we wouldn't want that in industrial, right? Although we would allow indoor cultivation in industrial. Um, so it's just important to, to understand how we set that up from the definitions on. It's based on what are you doing? The other thing that, um, I guess, uh, kind of, um, high-level, uh, piece of information is every single use, we are proposing to be an interim use. And I'm very, very interested in your feedback on that. So an interim use is similar to a conditional use, except for it has a set debt, you know, we're done timeline. If you remember, if you give somebody a conditional use permit, that use lives on their property forever. It never goes away. Um, if it's an interim use permit, that is not the case. It will stay on their property, and the intention is it stays on so long as they have a valid license with OCM. And the reason for that is we have no idea what this landscape is going to look like even five years from now. And so to allow somebody to have a use on their property that we discover three years from now couldn't be a worse match is really problematic if we have no way to pivot. And so making everything an interim use gives the state time to sort of catch up, maybe fix some things. It gives us time to sort of grow up in this industry and figure out what works and what doesn't. That's why we have it set up that way. I will tell you, we are unusual in that. Um, I, I am encouraging that in all of my other cities, but I am not seeing that in a lot of other cities. And I, so just so you know, that is an outlier. It is not, it is not the most business-friendly position to take because they're investing a bunch of capital into something that doesn't live forever. But I just, I'm very concerned about, I don't know if I, I don't know if I got this right. And if I didn't get this right, I want to be able to fix it, and I can't if they're there forever.
So interim use is fairly new for the planning commission. Um, the example I can give is Willowbrook Church. They used to be by the Ace Hardware, by Don Julio's. It was given a five-year and then I think a 10-year. Now they've moved out, so it expired. But they had end-of-date on those. Why are we going with, as long as they have a license versus saying, five years, you gotta come back just to be new for another five?
Because it seemed, it, it seemed, honestly, the, the reason that I did, and we did discuss this, um, at a staff level, was it seemed a little bit more business-friendly to say, hey, as long as you're playing by the rules and you've got a license with the state, and you haven't done something to rev, you know, that, that's, that license gets revoked, you get to operate. That's fair. But at the point when that license gets lost, or you know, gets pulled because you did something bad, or you quit, and two years later, somebody else come, we're not, that's what. or you quit and two years later, somebody else come, we're not, that's what we don't want. And so that, that's why we picked that.
That's fine. I'm okay with that. Susan? And we did interim uses, um, out on Broadway where we think it's going to be, um, a long-term housing or something, but for an interim, they needed to be able to do ag. We, we've done it before. My question is, somebody gets, especially since they can, a social equity permit can be transferred to a standard permit. My concern is having somebody with an interim use say, okay, now I'm up and running. I've got this great business. I'm going to pull my equity out and, and take my gains and run. And then we don't have the ability to make sure that this individual, um, is going to, A, play by our rules and is going to be, you know, good for our community. So on the interim, is it written so that it can be at the change of licensure, it can be reviewed? Our conditional use permits can be reviewed if there's a complaint. All right? So if there's a complaint about it, Venco was a great example of this. If they're, they have a conditional use permit and there's a complaint, we can review the conditional use permit and we can review it once a year. On the interim use permits, is that something that is going to be congruent? That when they, there's a complaint, um, a, a verifiable complaint? Or there is, um, uh, a change in the, the permit holder? Or I, I, I do like the, the timeline that it has to be reviewed. Is that going to be allowed?
So that will become, that really will be up to the planning commission and to the council. Just like a CUP, we can attach any reasonable conditions to the IUP. And so if what we're saying is we want to review these every year because of the, because they're so new or, you know, we want to review them at whatever, some sort of specific interval, we can. Having said that, we can't terminate unless they've done something wrong, right? And, um, or, or they meet this date specific, which is they no longer have a license. Now, one thing to note, this, I know this is super confusing if, I'm throwing so much information at you and I appreciate that. The license is transferable, but that registration is not. So if they want to transfer their license, three years from now, a social equity applicant wants to transfer their license, they can do that. But the registration that is required to, to register with the city for retail, retail, mezzo and micro businesses, um, they must come back to the city and get a registration. And if we decide, this is not a good area. We don't like it in the B2 anymore and we, we've moved it. They can't get that registration because it doesn't meet zoning. So that would be the, the opportunity to basically say, you can't get registration without the registration. You really can't transfer your license. So it's this really weird, hokey, backdoor way of getting to know, but it's how they wrote the statute.
Because, and, and at the end of the regular report, you know, you, you mentioned that, um, there's an awful lot of unknowns here. It is a whole lot easier for the city to be strict at the beginning and as we understand the unknowns better loosen up. It is much, much, much more difficult up to, oh my God, this is a taking of our business, for us to be loose and then realize that there are problems and now we want to strengthen. And so, you know, Grandma said, begin the way you mean to go on. And I'm just concerned that if we are loose at the beginning and run into problems, we would not be able to correct course.
Right. And that's, that's a big reason why these are shown as interim uses. So we have that ability. And then the other piece is frankly, the first couple ones that come through, it's going to be a lot of work to think about what are the conditions we want in these? You know, what are, it, it's going to depend on where they are and what they're doing. And I, I can't, I can't know what those look like now. I have some ideas around odor, around security, exactly around what you said around if there is code violation. Those, those would be things, but there's probably four or five things that we just won't know until, until we get into it. And that's why I think this is a good cover for the city to not have these be forever uses for right now.
Other commissioners, do you have any questions so far? I want to make sure. You guys have been pretty quiet.
Yeah.
They're mellow.
I guess we'll move on.
The state is the only one that's doing any enforcement right now, though.
Correct. And that is essentially true that we do one compliance check a year in exchange for having that reg, keeping the registration. They ratcheted down significantly what we have to do for the compliance check. It's going to look exactly like what we do for tobacco and alcohol where we send in somebody trying to, trying to buy. So, so that, I mean, it's going to be, it's something that is, that the police department is already very well versed in how to do it.
Yeah, but considering that there's the dosage, we're going to have to test.
No, we don't have to. That's what we, we don't have to do anything with, with product.
Okay.
Compliance. Product compliance is a hun, and yes, initially that was something they, they were kind of pushing onto the cities. Um, but that has completely changed. State is doing a hundred percent product compliance. We're just, are you checking IDs? Are you doing your safety process for that? So I did, so one of the things that I did do then is our interim use ordinance, I put in all cannabis uses are interim uses. And that is, those are, that's the quote at the bottom of this page on your screen. But that's just saying, explaining why. We don't know what we can't know and so we need this to be interim for now. Um, so that is another piece of the ordinance that I have proposed. And I'm, I'm seeing a lot of head nodding that you guys like IUP. Okay.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay. So now let's talk about where in the city we are allowing these uses. So outdoor cultivation, it's allowed in conservancy. It's allowed in ag. Indoor cultivation is going to be allowed in conservancy, ag and industrial. Any comments so far? Yeah.
Ag, we have some areas where ag is relatively small acreage. Do we want to have an acreage bottom limit?
So some cities are. Stillwater is. Um, last I heard, it was going to be twenty acres. I, I think that's a little excessive. I have in here, instead, I have, um, that is required to be a hundred feet. I want to make sure I get this right for you. Hold on. It's, uh, it must be set back at least a hundred feet from all property lines, the plants. Uh, there must be six feet fencing plus birmingham plus screening around wherever you're growing this. And the cannabis plants themselves cannot be visible from the right-of-way. So those are the three things that we have done. We did kick around a bit of a minimum lot size, but we decided if we said the, the setback and then we said we don't want to see it, we felt like that got us there without. If somebody wants to, you know, have a little plot in their backyard, I don't know if we really care. And that, that's different. Actually, you are allowed to do that.
You are allowed eight, though, at your house.
You're allowed eight, yeah. For mature and for growing.
You don't even have to be within your lot lines, probably.
You don't.
Much less to set back.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that was something in the statute. Um, okay, so manufacturing. And here, for the purposes of this, we included the low potency hemp edibles. We're not exactly regulating them, but we kind of wanted to group in some other similar activities because there is odor for the, the low potency as well. So the manufacturing of cannabis or low potency hemp edibles, they can manufacture in the conservancy, the ag, B3, BP and I. It made sense to us that if you were allowed to cultivate it, you should also be able to manufacture it. Um, and, but then there was the B3 and the BP where we thought that could work as a manufacturing use. Obviously, manufacturing is indoor. Uh, there's, there's no outdoor manufacturing.
Are we going to require? And, and there, there was an issue at a house very near me and it is amazing, the odor.
Yes.
Um, and how wonderfully well it carries.
It carries very well. And so we do have very specific restrictions around odor. I, we will get to that.
Okay, but on our IUPs, our, our B3s and, and Is and BP's, those are often fairly small lots.
This is all indoor.
Okay.
And I will talk about the odor, but I guess what I'm wondering for this use table is, are you okay with the districts we show it in? We'll talk about the performance standards that we're going to attach. But just generally, you know, I, if there's something where you think, that's not the right district for that. That's what I want you to tell me with, on this slide.
Ken, could, could you please help me with some of the, um, the? I, I've slept since I looked at the zoning code and.
Do you want me to go across and tell you what they are?
Well, I, I, I know B3, but some examples of some of the businesses that are already there that, that are already allowed.
In, in which districts, Susan?
B3 and BP.
Starting with B2, for many uses, a club or lodge, daycares, funeral home, garden supply stores, health and recreation facilities, hotels, medical uses, motels, motor vehicle, sales, parts, repairs, dealerships, offices, plant nurseries, commercial, uh, or, excuse me, restaurants, retail office, multi-tenant structures, schools, truck stops, breweries, micro distilleries and taprooms. So a lot of the area where Walmarts and Target and on 12th Street, that's a B2 zoning, to give you an example.
But this, it's not allowed in B2.
Oh, well, never mind. We'll go to B3 then. That was good practice. So B3s are limited in industrial. So that's club and lodge, daycares, funeral homes, garden supply stores, some of the same uses. Uh, health and recreation facilities, hotels, motels, medical uses. Again, the motor vehicles, uh, facilities, offices, excuse me, plant nurseries, restaurants, retail office, multi-tenant structures, retail sales, schools, truck stops. A lot more uses. Like manufacturing, uh, commercial recreation, self-service storage, veterinary clinics, warehouses and distributions, breweries, micro distilleries and taprooms.
And, and the areas, it's that, that area next to the interstate.
Like where the.
North of 11th and south of Broadway. And then that funky triangle up, up between eight and thirty-five where we just had the zoning issues that we, we dealt with.
Up near Wyoming.
So pretty much everything, retail of cannabis products is where most of our retail is currently.
Right.
Yeah, the one, one exception, if I may, is we're not proposing any of it in the, oh yeah, retail would be in the B1, which is includes the businesses along Broadway.
Yep.
Yep.
Which is what you would expect.
Of all these other things, uh, the area that the B3, a big chunk of that is, say, where the new Ford dealership went in. And those businesses along there.
And, and, and I, my concern with I is that is where we have been putting and saying some of our high-density res. And it is significantly bordered by residential.
So we have a proposed, um, distance from, uh, residential if you're manufacturing. Uh, so that's one of the performance standards.
Thank you.
Um, so then we have cannabis distribution. Um, so this is going to be, um, in the B3, the BP and the I. The retail of cannabis products, it's, uh, if you see for both conservancy and ag, it says IUP is ACC. What that means is we will allow the retail sales as an accessory use to something else. And what, so that's if somebody wants to open one of those micro businesses or mezzo businesses in more of that, um, farm-to-table concept where they're, they are growing it there. They are manufacturing it there and they want to sell it there. This allows them to sell it there, but it needs to be an accessory use. It's so, it's not going to be the primary use out there. And then it's allowed in the B, B1, B2, just, that's just straight retail. MU1 and MU2, that's just straight retail. And again, there's performance standards. That's going to keep this away from residential. It's going to keep it away from, from a few other things as well. We do in the table have the retail of the low potency hemp edibles. There's just a lot of questions from individuals around this. So we included hemp edibles and the beverages in this chart to help, to help people who are looking to start a business or are trying to understand what's allowed where. It's allowed even if we don't say, if, even if we don't use the word P, it's still allowed under that statute. But this just gives, uh, you know, the, the residents and, and businesses helpful information, I think.
But it's permitted by right. In other words.
Permitted by right under your liquor license. Yep. And that is set in the statute, or this proposed ordinance. It makes it clear. You need to have a, a liquor license to be able to sell it. But that's just true regardless. Um, and then onsite consumption of cannabis. So those mezzo and micro businesses are allowed to, um, provide for onsite consumption. Um, and so we put that in the B1 and the B2 and the MU1 and the MU2. Um, do you have any thoughts about that for onsite consumption?
But you're not allowing it at a retail.
Retail's are not allowed to.
Okay.
So retailers do not get to, there's no opportunity for them to have an onsite consumption endorsement. That's just the mezzo and micro businesses, which is why I think those licenses will be the most desirable. Likewise, then, that, that same argument would apply for if somebody wanted to have a cannabis event. We would say, these are the zoning districts where we would even consider allowing onsite consumption. It doesn't mean you get to. You still have to show us how you're going to do it safely and we, and you know, the, the council is still going to have to approve that. But you, you can't come with an onsite consumption plan for cannabis in, I don't know, B3, BP or I. That, those aren't locations for that.
With your onsite consumption, um, you know, if, would it be similar if they want to smoke it to the current smoking where it can't be indoor, but it can't be on the patio either or?
Can't, right. So, so you really, this is not going to be consumed in a smoking capacity because it's, because of some of the, the overlap of other laws. It's almost impossible to, to consume it that way. So we're going to be pivoting back to the edibles. So people are going to be consuming it as an edible.
Okay.
Overwhelmingly.
So if we were to have an event center in, um, and I'm saying like wedding event center or whatever event center in Forest Lake that has weddings and they have corporate events and they have yada, 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 they would not be allowed to have a cannabis event at that event center.
Well, would they be?
Because, because we would, we could allow some of those in the ag and conservancy zonings.
Yeah, they couldn't have onsite consum, right now it's not allowing it in ag or conservancy. Do you think it needs to be added there?
If we allow an event center there which our surrounding communities have found them to be, um, good business, should we consider that?
And Susan, when you say an event center, are you thinking like the places that convert farms into wedding venues?
Yeah, yeah. But they also hold corporate events and they also have product launches there and they, you know, lots of different kinds of events. And it is a, um, it is a business and in some ways family-friendly way to keep, um, a farm or a rural, rural character or, um, you know, a, a local business.
Well, right, if I may, Mr. Sherr, right now, we don't have anything in the zoning code that even addresses wedding centers or event centers in the ag district or the conservancy district.
I know we don't now, but as we're looking forward, um, it wouldn't surprise me that that would be something that we would want to consider.
Was, are we getting ahead of ourselves with this ordinance? Talk about event centers. If we don't have anyplace else in the code that talks about event centers.
If we say that these are not allowed in those zoning districts, then even if we were to say in the future that event centers would be allowed in those zoning districts, this would not be allowed in those zoning districts.
Unless this got amended also.
Right. I'm, I'm just, I'm asking the group. I'm, you know. You know, we're, we're doing these what-ifs and, and trying to, to, to read our crystal balls.
So let's say hypothetically, somebody has, I'll use a, the airport, the hangar, a hangar at the airport and has an event there and has the low, uh, potency drinks there, whatever. Is that a permitted thing? Are they, if they have a liquor license or something, then are they allowed to do that?
For the event, and we have had folks that had events, especially when the, um, parachute people were there. At that area.
Yeah, but there's a difference between having like a seltzer drink that they can buy at, at any liquor store and take it to a hangar and have an event like that. Or having like a gummy party where you're selling gummies to everybody at the facility like a rave type thing. I would be assuming is what they're driving them all. Where everybody's going to be high as a kite.
That's kind of the difference.
That's a big difference. So to allow it, you're, you're allowing. Essentially cannabis use on a, on a large scale usage.
You're going to be allowing it, you know, downtown and all sorts of other areas, any place that you can. Any, any retail or onsite consumption.
Yeah, don't get me wrong, I actually would prefer it in the rural agricultural area than town. If they're going to have that type of event.
The THC drinks are all hemp-based, they're all legal already. So this is only the cannabis part.
Cannabis and.
Well, and, and so.
And the higher potency stuff that I'd rather not have downtown and, and, you know.
I'm also marking, let's just say I've been in a couple. And so you end up with. No one's sitting around.
Purely for research.
I have a twenty-six and a twenty-seven year old. Any other questions? But you walk in, they shop just like they would for alcohol at a liquor store and they leave. This is what, ninety-nine percent of what we're going to deal with is that. And I think that if we get too far outside of there on what ifs, I, I think we have to revisit. The ordinance i- if the rails leave the track, the train leaves the track. From the ones I've been in, it's, it's a double door, you give them your driver's license and that, you have to do that before you can even shop. Then you can go in, you can shop, make sure you have cash, but don't worry, they have an ATM in the facility. Pay cash and you leave. Just saying.
Yeah, and so the onsite consumption of cannabis, I mean, we, we can pull that out. What that, who's, who is that going to affect? That's going to affect the mezzo business and the micro business. Because again, retailers can't allow onsite consumption. So, and it's going to limit potentially where you could have a cannabis event that would allow onsite consumption. There is nothing about the districts that we have this in now that is set in stone, so. I'm hearing a little bit of maybe it should be more out in, in the more rural areas and maybe we're not excited about it in the downtown as, for consumption. And if that's the feedback, I want to know that so I can bring that back to council.
So what, which zoning districts are we allowing mezzo and micros in?
Well, essentially, we're allowing, remember, we're going by use. So for looking at the uses, a mezzo is really kind of allowed, a mezzo and micro are almost allowed anywhere. It just depends on what part of their business they're operating. If they're cultivating, they're allowed to cultivate in the places where we're allowed to cultivate. If they're manufacturing, they can manufacture in the places they're manufacturing. What I understood from the last individual I talked to about this is he said, really, your cultivation and your manufacturing are going to be offsite. And then you're going to have your retail and your onsite consumption. And he, you know, he said that can look like a cafe. Or kind of like a, you know, a smaller, a smaller little, little bar type feel. They haven't seen them explode into large bars yet. The, the market hasn't. Showing up there, but that's, you know.
So why are we saying no retail of low potency and no onsite? In commercial? No cafes?
Sorry, I'm not tracking. Which, which one do you feel?
Isn't C?
C is conservancy.
Conservancy, okay. B ones and B twos would be commercial.
And we are, we are not, yeah, or we are, sorry, allowing it, yeah, okay. Yep.
Okay, sorry, my, my error, I apologize.
Are we expecting that? Are we expecting like onsite consumption cafes for cannabis? Around town where you're going to go in, pop a bunch of gummies and sit there all afternoon?
Probably not.
Like a cigar shop.
That's what I'm wondering.
Cigar where you sit in a cigar.
Yeah, like a hookah, like a hookah lounge.
Cannabis dens all around the city. Come on in, buy a bag and sit on your couch.
If you go to the cannabis cafe, you still got to get home somehow.
Right.
Well, no, we're not, because going back to how many of those can open in the entire state? There's just not enough to, to make that a reality.
But it's my expectation that the next legislature is going to say, oh my gosh. We finally figured out the math here. And we blew the math. So we're going to crank these numbers. I mean, that, that truly is my expectation. Somebody's going to say, the mathy doesn't work.
Well, they know that, because remember, they're not, they're supposed to be looking at what the saturation rate is. And so what they've determined is that the demand for these types of places in the state total does not exceed a hundred and twenty-five.
But remember, we said there are probably more than a hundred and twenty-five drug dealers.
Well, yes, I think that's a safe assumption. But, but it's hard to know who the consumer, I mean. Yes, I don't know that that's, again, my point of that story back, back then when I said that was. They're not doing a good analysis because then that's not, who is consuming it via a drug dealer is not indicative of who's going to buy it from a store.
Does onsite consumption concern you?
It, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't. So I, I switched the side because I think this is relevant to what we're talking about. And this is talking, so going back to when we didn't, we're not putting a cap on the number of businesses of retail, mezzo or micro businesses in the city. But we are putting a distance requirement between them. So there must be at least five hundred feet between any cannabis business and any other cannabis business from property line to property line. And that's a little bit to address the concept of, yeah, we're not opening up four shops in a row, guys. That's not a sustainable business model for the city. In addition, right now, we have proposed two hundred and fifty feet from all schools. From all commercial daycares, from all residential treatment facilities and from most parks. That's, we are excluding Memorial Park, and I'm going to shift to this slide to show, to show why. Because if we include the Memorial Park, it takes up, it eliminates so much of our downtown. That we felt like that, we weren't sure that that's what we wanted to do. So as you can see from the, this is the proposing a two hundred and fifty foot buffer from all of those types of places that I just mentioned. It does limit your location options to be one of these businesses. And then you have the five hundred feet between businesses. So we kind of end up a little bit at the same place of restriction in terms of how many businesses will come here. But we're not saying, oh, we're only allowing one. We're saying, let's build out a model that naturally creates what we want.
My concern on the previous discussion was that we're hanging our hat on the fact that right now, there's only a certain number of licenses. And, and if that changes two, three, five years from now, what we hung our hat on just fell off the wall. The other thing I, I, on the second one about Memorial Park.
You want signage there too, like me?
Well, no, I'm, I'm just, I'm just remembering that. We have folks that are saying, we want more families to come to our lake and, and our lakeside park. And we want more families to be shopping at cute little stores in our downtown. And I remember when we had some adult, an adult store. And the, oh my God, families aren't going to come here anymore. This is not a family-friendly thing. So how does that either clash? Or is it considered a family-friendly thing? Like the family that weeds together stays together? I don't know.
Well, I mean, that's, that's, and so while you're chewing on that, the alternative, and I, I think I provided both maps in your pocket as well. Was a five hundred foot buffer from everything. So instead of two hundred and fifty feet, it's a five hundred foot buffer from all schools. Residential treatment facilities, commercial daycares. Commercial daycare is because it is almost impossible to track in-home daycares. So, so that, and we also have a setback already from residential, so we just didn't feel like that was necessary. And then parks, again, excluding Memorial Park. But. For reference, your tobacco and your liquor license do use five hundred feet, but they don't use the same list. So tobacco has a list of what they are, distances from, and liquor has a different list. And I don't remember which one is churches and schools and which one is parks and schools. I think tobacco is churches and schools. In any event, so we don't have consistency in the code right now. I would advocate that we maybe consider about, consider creating some consistency. And have all three uses have the exact same standard. It's easier for staff to enforce if we're using the exact same map. For everything, and then it creates some, you know, just continuity across the board. But for the purposes of today, for the purposes of tonight, one of the questions that I want to hear from you all on is, is two fifty too small? The reason that we are showing two fifty is because it at least opens up some of the downtown, but maybe you don't want that.
So other cities that you're dealing with now, are they in the two fifty range or do they expand?
I have anything from two fifty to a thousand feet. There's some limits in the statute in terms of what you can do. The statute's a little bit hokey because it's. The words are poorly written. A thousand feet's pretty excessive.
That's excessive.
But we have five hundred currently for tobacco and. I would say go with the flow. I, I do have a correction for your map though.
Yeah.
Where you see the two eights up there for highway eight.
Yeah.
That purple, which is daycare, that daycare is no longer there. We have rezoned that and it is now a commercial business.
Okay. I will let the.
We're zoning people here.
No, that's super helpful, because Bolton and Mick, I think, made these maps and so I don't know, I don't know where they're pulling their data from.
And it was recent.
It's fairly recent.
It was a reason.
Perfect. But no, that's good to know because it does need, it needs to be right. So I just want to make sure I go back and make sure that I'm correctly hearing you all. Five hundred feet is the number that you like better for distance requirements from the special things, right?
Yes.
The parks, the, the schools, okay.
And do they want to keep the five hundred feet between the businesses?
And yeah, five, like you think about five hundred feet, okay. Okay. Okay.
I think. I think two years we'll be revisiting some of those.
Oh, this is going to get rewritten probably every year.
And, and I get that, but you know, as I said earlier, it's, it's much easier to be strict and then loosen. Than to have somebody. Make the investments. Under a looser environment and then have us say, ah, too bad, so sad, go away. Because then we get into all sorts of nasty legal issues. And, and those are fun for you too, but just saying.
They're not. Okay, so let's talk about some just sort of miscellaneous provisions that we have in the code. So signs, the, the statute actually itself puts a lot of restrictions on signage for these guys. So there really isn't more that we need to add. They can only have up to two signs per business. They can't have any blinking, any, you know, blinking light-up things. They're not allowed to use any sort of creative language. Or anything like that. It really is, it's kind of like the adult bookstore concept of just kind of a little sign and that's it. So they'll, under the statute, they get less signage than what our code allows them. So there's really not a whole lot for us to do there.
Are they going to have the green and white cross that you see in front of a lot of cannabis?
So that, that's not cannabis. And that's what's been so confusing, I think, is you see the, is the, you see the neon pot leaf and everybody assumes that's cannabis.
No, 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 it looks like a plus sign. And it's green and white. Colorado has, Illinois has them outside their businesses.
I haven't seen anything that's requiring everybody to sort of demarcate with something specific. But, but what is confusing for a lot of people is the shops that are selling the edibles. They have the hemp signs up and people are thinking it's cannabis and why isn't the city regulating that? It's not cannabis. It's that hemp, that's completely different. It's not different to a casual consumer, but it is different in how it's regulated. Parking, you have to meet the minimum parking requirements for each use. So if you're manufacturing, if you're retail, if you're, you just have to meet, you know, the requirements that we would already have. For those generic uses in the code. We do have a very specific provision in, in the code, in this ordinance for a security plan. The security plan needs to be submitted to the, the police chief. And it's going to talk about how the city is going to protect, I'm just going to read this, public health, safety, welfare. It includes, it must address parking, traffic, securing monetary transactions, building security. Alarm systems, both internal and external, screening, lighting, window and door placement, landscaping and hours of operation. I mean, it is incredibly robust in terms of what needs to be provided and the police chief needs to sign off on that. And that goes back to the concept of we're cash only. The second thing I want to talk about is the odor mitigation. So they are required to provide an odor mitigation plan. We don't have a lot of words in the code around what we want in an odor mitigation plan because none of us are odor experts. And so we. And, and I say that, but I'm the city attorney for South St. Paul, so actually, I kind of am an odor expert because. They have the nasal ranger and they have a whole bunch of stuff with Santa Max. But that's not a good place for staff to be, you know, kind of weighing in. On that, we need the plan, but more importantly, what we are saying is that no, the plan needs to demonstrate. And then this creates a condition that's in the IUP. No odors will be detected from the property line, and that's where that nasal ranger would come in if we needed to use it. Or, and this is really critical, this, we've learned this from other states. The adjacent tenant space, if you're in a multi-tenant building. So what's happened in some of these particularly retail shops or the smell shops, yeah, the HVAC circles it through everybody. And so the poor little lunch, you know, counter next door is not appreciative of that smell. So we do have that already written, odor mitigation. You don't get to stink. The end. You figure out how to not stink.
And, and I used to be nasal ranger certified. Well, yeah, Newport, the, the.
Not everybody can get certified.
I understand that.
Yeah, you have to, you have to be extra good.
But that is so well-accepted now.
It is.
That we will be able to put in the individual IPs that.
Yes.
What, what the nasal ranger limits are.
Right, so that's why we don't have a lot of words in the code, because that's really going to be something that is going to be put into these IUPs. But it's kind of almost a reminder, one, you're going to have to do this, two, you can't smell. The end. You can't smell from the property line. And if you're in a multi-tenant space, none of your neighbors get to think you stink either. Okay, outdoor cultivation, we had already talked about this. This was the question around, do we need a size? A minimum size, and we had decided no, instead, we're going to say a hundred feet. And six-foot tall perimeter fencing, plus the screened buffer and no plants visible from the right-of-way. For indoor cultivation, because we recognize that if you're doing greenhouses, that can be obnoxious lighting to your neighbor. That has to be approved by the, whatever your lighting plan is, has to be approved. And then we are also saying that if you are going to grow this indoors. You cannot use a greenhouse, a hoop house or a temporary structure in the industrial district. That's going to need to be the old cement building. We can't, we don't want to see it. And that's largely because we don't want it to be. Enticing for individuals to help themselves.
So are these, in all, in all cases here, are they going to need like a site plan review or is just a permitting process?
If they're doing building, which overwhelmingly, they're probably going to have to, it would be a site plan as well. Depending upon what, you know, what gets triggered in the code. But if all they're doing is interior work to the building and so there isn't outside stuff, it's probably just going to be an IUP.
I'm thinking more of the outside stuff where we want to see the fencing and what is that, just by permit, Ken?
No, that's site plan approval, just like we did for the.
Okay.
Okay.
Facility tonight.
Yeah, if there's, right, if there's an outdoor fence, if it's a, so outdoor cultivation would definitely have a site plan.
However, i- if we're going to say that they can't be visible. We're going to have to actually enforce it.
This outdoor cultivation?
Yes. All right, because we're not good at that. I mean, we, we have a couple of businesses in town that were required to be screened. They are not. And we have not enforced that in their conditional use permits or by ordinance. And so. If we, if we do this and we're saying that we're going to, we gotta, we've got to actually do it.
We have a lot of, of better tools than the last year in terms of how to enforce. So with the administrative citations, with some other things that we've been working on at the staff level, the good news is we have the ability. I do believe that we have the abilities now to have better code enforcement systems and. Well, you can pull the IUP, but I think you would start. Well, you can pull the IUP, but I think you would start by citing them. And when you start to cite a business, the way we have it written right now is eventually you get up to $2,000 a day, they're a little more motivated to cooperate. Okay, so we talked about the indoor cultivation. Retail hours, right now, we're saying that you can have your shop open from 10 to 9. This matches what we're allowing liquor stores. And it's obviously not allowed in adult-use businesses. So additional standards for those more intense cannabis uses, so that's going to be your cultivation, your manufacturing, your, you know, anything that has the potential to be obnoxious to the neighbor, we're saying that the buildings have to be set back at least 250 feet from a residential zoning district or residential use. You can't use exterior storage, and this goes back to the safety thing. We don't need someone picking up your trailer with your product. And then the mechanical odor suppression, trash, all of that, that, all those systems, because they're probably going to have a more robust HVAC system, we want that screened. So it doesn't look unsightly. And we made it to the end. So I know that was a lot, I'm sorry, I was hoping, I thought I could do it in an hour, I'm sorry.
That was her fault, my fault.
It was 100% Susan's fault, and I apologize for that. Anybody who didn't speak up, want any, want, anything that you want me to know that I can take back to council, feedback-wise?
No, I would just follow up on what Susan said, on being more restrictive to start with is always better.
Do you feel like the restrictions you saw tonight were, were restrictive enough? When you put them all together as a package?
It's a good start.
Okay, you want more?
To change the 500.
Not at this time, but I think as we get operational, you're gonna see stuff.
Yes.
So as that comes along, at least we have the power or the authority to change things as need be, as it comes along.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I have, I have two minor corrections, once again, engineer me. Under your business lease summary, we're on page 51 of the report. Under 2A4.
Yeah.
Can you put a zero in front of that point 3?
Sure.
And it's the same under 3A4. Can you put the zero?
Thank you.
Engineers up here would really appreciate it.
Dots disappear.
They really do.
Sometimes disappear when you're Xerox, and we-
Yeah, yeah.
You know. Other than that, fabulous job.
Thanks, Amanda. Susan, do they last? Is he the wheel spinning?
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's, my, my biggest concern is we really are hanging our hat on the low number of potential. And I don't think that that's gonna last much more than a year or so and so. I, I think that, that we protect ourselves with the 500 feet, both the 500 feet from our sensitive uses and between, 500 feet between individuals. This is already a problem in our schools. And one of the, you know, the, y'all know that I'm on, on, on that, the, the Speak Coalition, and it's already a, a serious issue with some overdoses. And, yes, all of our kids could drive wherever they wanted to drive, but this is a community standard that I'd like to see, so.
Do, do you feel like you want to recommend to council that they do limit the number? I mean, we don't have to stick with one. They could pick five, they could pick 10, they could pick one. Well, no, we can't, we have to pick two, we have to have at least two. But, so we can limit that, like I said, we don't have that in there right now. But is that something that would give, you know, do you wanna see a limit of three or four? I don't know if two's right, maybe it's two, I don't know. I won't pretend to say I know that. Well, it's for you.
I, I personally don't care. We have 10 liquor stores, and they seem to do okay, but we have trouble keeping four vape shops open. So I, I think the number's gonna fall-
That's not a bad problem.
Uh, somewhere in that number, and I would bet you it's gonna be much closer to the four. When these people walk in, and, you know, the purchase is gonna be topping 100 bucks every time.
Well, and just the investment to set up a business.
Yeah, you need a lot of people walking through the door. I, I just don't see that many coming.
Okay.
But that's my opinion. Other commissioners?
Good opinion, yeah.
Not sure it's a good opinion, it's my opinion.
I agree, they're gonna be in every city. It's not like you're traveling to a different city to get, they're gonna be all over shortly, so. A couple of towns, probably enough.
Any last words for Amanda?
Amanda, this has been, it, it's been a moving target for you. It's been incredibly complicated, and it's asking an, an attorney to be a scientist and a, and a health professional. And so thank you very, very much for all the work you've done on this.
Yeah, you're welcome, you're welcome, of course.
We do appreciate you coming. Feel free to come to any of the planning commission meetings.
Sounds good.
I'm sure it's just number one on your list.
Sure do love all my nights in meetings.
We'll, we'll move on to our updates. We have Councilperson Roberts, or anything you have this evening for us?
Is there any doubt that we don't have the best in the business as the city attorney? I mean, this is just one thing that she is really focused on, and especially what we've gone through here, without having a city administrator, how she's helped navigate that is, is amazing, so thank you for that. And I've sat through part of this whole thing, but there was more information, so it was, it was good to, to see that. So, normal updates, I just want to congratulate Commissioner Larson on his, his win and serve city council, looking forward to working with you. And I wanna thank Commissioner Wagner and Young for their willingness to put themselves out. As, as we know, there's only a couple of them that are crazy enough to do this kind of work, so thank you for that. And I know with Commissioner Larson coming off, potentially, off of, obviously, off of the planning commission, that we're gonna need to fill some spots there. And I understand Chair Gerard might be done, but I would advocate and hope that maybe he would be willing to stick for a-
We would like you to stay.
Little longer, so-
We need your wisdom.
You do a great job of running these meetings, and so maybe that conversation can be had between yourself and I, at some point, maybe, over a beer, a bye, and maybe you'll decide to stay or something, so. The only other update would be is on our city administrator search. As you know, this continues to be tumultuous. We have, we had two interview, or finalists come in to interview a week ago Friday. We thought we landed on someone that would be a great fit for Forest Lake. He opted for some different options. So we are moving forward, we're going in a different, kind of a different way to, to approach this, and I think, hopefully, within a week or two, we might have some other people in the mix and be able to finalize that position. That's my goal, so, any?
What's the name of the company that, that's helping you all out?
So it's, it's, well, Amanda, is, they're right-
It's Express Employment Professional?
Yes, and so Carl Amely, who is heading that up, is, his office is right here. They also have a sister company in Stillwater that he mainly works with, but he's been very active in the chamber, he's actually in the board for the chamber. He's been, he's done such a great job compared to our first go-around on that, bringing in just the background references, non-solicited and solicited, and he's just done a really nice job. So I think we'll, we'll land this thing soon, so.
Any questions for Councilperson Roberts?
All right, well, thank you for your, your duty here. Yeah, congratulations.
Mary Luck, congratulations.
Congratulations to you as well.
Amanda, anything else you'd like to add this evening?
No, thank you, Your Honor.
Ken?
Couple of updates for the commission. We will not have a meeting in two weeks, it's a Wednesday before Thanksgiving. We will have a meeting on December 11th, that will be the one meeting. For sure, we'll be bringing back the comprehensive plan tables we talked about before, and the concept of trying to get those in alignment with what the Met Council says they are, and tweaking however they need to be tweaked. We really hope to have, at least in part, the Phase 2 of the zoning code rewrite. In fact, Abby and I are gonna meet with a consultant tomorrow and go start figuring out what can we get ready to bring to you on the 11th. We wanna keep that moving forward. The County Environmental Center, I think, is having a grand opening on December 3rd.
I called them, because I, we're gonna do some medical supplies there, and they said early next year, so that would be great if it was the 3rd, that'd be awesome.
Yeah, they're, they're having, they're still getting their last of their equipment all. There's always something. So that's great, that'll be a great facility for all the people in the region.
Where do we end up with all the trees we wanted?
That, no, that's a phased, as part of the approval, they're supposed to come back after the open, next, early next year, to work with staff and get an approved planting plan. Because they knew they couldn't get them all in this fall, and they had to extend the budget out. That was part of the conditions. Mr. Carwash is just about ready to open, so if you need a car wash, it's looking great. Ford is open, they had a big grand opening last month, I believe. So a lot of exciting new things coming in.
What did Ford do with the sign? I just noticed the one on the building, and that's it.
They don't have one?
They got away without having one?
They, they ended up with the one pylon out on 15th, and they worked it out where they could have signs on the building itself on the freeway side to meet Ford's requirements and fit our ordinance. So they did not need the second pylon on the freeway.
It, it is funny looking, when you look at their streetlight. Here's what it is.
Questions for Ken?
That's all I have, thank you.
Tim?
Nope, all good.
Susan?
Nothing, nothing planning, just for folks that, that actually do watch this, Community Thread out of Stillwater has extended their transportation team to the Forest Lake area. We talked about this as part of the, the Met Council pulling away from providing transportation options in Forest Lake. This is one that's gonna be volunteer-driven. If the Met Council won't help us out, volunteers in Forest Lake will. And it's a great service for elders to go to a dental appointment, or you wanna go to a grad party, or, or something else, to get rides in Forest Lake. Community Thread is the place to go.
Thank you.
Nothing?
Yes, nothing?
All good, sir.
All right, I have nothing. With that, Chair is looking for a motion to adjourn. Have a motion, or have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, it's an unnegatable motion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for all of your input this evening.